Okay, we're going to reconvene the public session. It's 7:10. Get the city attorney to report on actions taken in closed session.
Yes, the city council added a single additional closed session agenda item, another anticipated litigation, and we didn't talk about that at all. Oh, it's minutes, sorry. And the council discussed those matters which were listed on the agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now we'll have the pledge of allegiance, which I will lead, and then the invocation with the council member Grunmeyer.
May we begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. If you would please join me in a word of prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you that we still have the opportunity to come together. I pray, Lord, for wisdom for us as we make decisions in this difficult time. And, Lord, I just pray for patience and comfort and grace for the residents of Norco. Lord, people are having a hard time. People are stressed, and we need to remember as residents of Norco that we are in this together, and that city staff and the council are doing the best that we can to help our neighbors and to help the residents of this community. And so, Lord, as we go through and we make these decisions, I pray that you would especially help us to see the big picture, Lord. And I know that in the Bible several times it mentions, "Do not have fear." And, Lord, I pray that as we make these decisions, we remember that, and that we remember that even out of horrible things and tough times, you can bring things that are good. And, Lord, I know that during this tough time, we can count on Norco residents to help each other, to support each other, and to make these tough times better for all of us. Lord, we pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Now we have a recognition. I'll read this document. May is Military Appreciation Month. May is Military Appreciation Month, which is special for our nation and the city of Norco, one of Norco's, one of America's most patriotic communities. This commemorative month not only includes Memorial Day, one of our most revered holidays, but also Military Spouse Appreciation Day and Armed Forces Day. Military Appreciation Month is about honoring those who have protected our liberties, many of whom have made the ultimate sacrifice. The city of Norco is proud to recognize and celebrate the significance as we honor the service and sacrifice of members of the Army, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, Marines, National Guard, and Space Force, as well as the sacrifices and dedications of their family. Thank you. All right, I'll ask the city clerk to give instructions on public comments for this evening's agenda.
Good evening. The public is invited to participate in public comment by submitting their comments prior to the item being discussed closing, by emailing the city council at ci.norko.ca.us. Please identify the item you're referencing. For example, general public, 4A, 4B. Please limit comments to 250 words or less. All comments submitted before the item is closed will be read aloud at the meeting. Any comments received after the deadline or before the meeting has adjourned will be maintained with the minutes of the meeting. All public comments received prior to 5:00 p.m. this evening are online for review with the city council agenda. Thank you.
Before you go on, do you, assuming you want to, also need to add the emergency item, which I guess is best defined as direction concerning potential reopening of businesses.
I'd like to make that motion for an emergency agenda item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add an emergency agenda item. Give the roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the city council consent items. All items listed under the consent counter are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion, to consider any action by the council, any public comments or any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent counter. Items removed from the consent counter will be separately considered under item three of the agenda. Any items need to be pulled, anyone?
E.
E?
Yes, please.
Question approve the rest?
Wait a minute, we've got to ask for cards here.
That's right, yeah, sorry.
Is there any speaker cards or emails to be read on these items?
There are no public comments.
Okay, all right.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second on the remainder of the consent items. Please roll call vote.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, Councilman Newton, you pulled item E.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this is going to be a question or two for Chad. And before I start, I'd just like to let council know that I've had conversations with the Public Works Director regarding this item. And so, part of this I still want to bring and make public, but the more I think about it, the more concerns I have. So that, not to completely rehash what we've discussed, is that the, at this point in time, to award a design contract in the amount of $79,000, the two residential properties between Temescal and Corona, these easements have not been granted at this time. And that's still my understanding. And but with that, that gives me a little bit of heartburn, but I understand it fundamentally. When these homeowners, as long as they're positive with the granting of this easement as the design process goes through, does Riverside County Flood Control, do they provide valuable consideration to the property owners for the granting of these easements? And that was one question that Chad and I had not discussed. It's stuck in my head, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Newton, generally, it's always a case-by-case basis. It depends on if there's a direct need, meaning we, the flood control will need to do a project and needed to go through the property. It meaning it was a need versus a choice. In this case, for this particular project, in trying to capture most of the water where it's going, which is it's going through these two properties between Temescal and Corona, that is the most direct route to try to capture the water and take it to the next location, which is from Temescal to Corona. It is not a requirement to us to do that. We can try to capture some of the water, but not as much. If we went down Fifth Street to Corona, we could do that route. It definitely would probably be more expensive in rate due because there's that large hill that goes over in that area between Temescal and Corona on Fifth Street. So it really depends on the scenario, whether it's an ask and a request. Sometimes they'll give value of consideration. And it may just be, it could be dollars. It could be improvements to the property, you know, to get that easement. In this particular case, we approach the residents and recognize that they both have a direct benefit. And in the past, we've seen impacts to prior owners of the properties in that we recognize if they gave us an easement to put the infrastructure through their property, they gained from that also as a, as a, just an improvement in that hopefully should eliminate a lot of the impacts they're getting. They're still going to get surface water, but not nearly as much as they've been getting because that's the flow-through pattern is going from Temescal to Corona. And those particular properties are direct impacted to that surface flow. So the general answer, I say, when it's a flood control project directly, I can't speak for how, what they do when they propose a project. I'm aware they have offered compensation for different things depending on the need. And generally, for us, when we're designing projects, we normally try to steer clear of direct compensation, more of physical improvements to the property potentially. You know, if they had a chain link fence, and maybe they wanted a new chain link fence with slats, or maybe a white vinyl fence.
Would that be more of a city policy then?
Um.
For valuable consideration?
Well, for example, we don't have a city policy as far as giving valuable consideration. For example, my easy example would be the work we just did for widening on Hamner in certain locations between Fifth and Third. In that same case, we did not offer any money or any type of compensation to any of the property owners. We basically emphasized that this is a public improvement that the city would be doing, using, in this case, it was Tump funds. So it would save the, any future development along those properties that are currently in development from them or future buyer having to spend the money to do those improvements. So basically, we already be an improved property, except for utilities, obviously aren't brought into the property. But at least the road improvements that they would have to dedicate anyway has already been done, and we've made those improvements, and they don't have to worry about those later. We've really tried to not create that policy because then it becomes, well, this project got that, this project got this. And it really should always be kept on a case-by-case basis. That's my general answer as far as value consideration. It kind of subject, what is value to one person versus another.
Right, and I know today that those residents are supportive of this project. But we will not know the impacts to these residents until the design drawings are done.
Correct.
And at any time, they can say, "I've changed my mind."
Correct.
Which we've had happen before.
Has happened.
Which means then we will have to spend additional monies to redesign to take a different route.
Correct.
And that's the troubling part. So I'm just trying to be, you know, trying to assure myself that, you know, these folks will be able to have someone that they can talk to, that they won't be BSed, and, you know, whatever impacts they have will be mitigated. Whether it's through consideration or physically being replaced or revamped or whatever.
Yeah, that's one of the things we spoke to on the phone when you asked me some questions. Again, my goal is to come to the resident with all the facts. So they're not going into a choice or decision and not having all the information, knowing exactly how it's, how they could be impacted and where this project's going to be, what things might be damaged or have to be removed and replaced. We want them to see everything. So when they say, "Yes, we want to grant that easement for you," they know exactly what they're signing. And they've already told us the conditions, meaning, you know, or the ask. A lot of times they'll ask for the moon. We come back to somewhere down, maybe in the middle, you know. So an example I gave was if there's a current chain link fence, we're normally, we were replacing kind. We can go to flood control and say, "Listen, would you be willing to accept maybe a white vinyl fence?" They might, they probably wouldn't do a block wall because it's a significant improvement. But the beauty is, is they can ask, and they have the choice to simply say, "I don't want it anymore. It's just too, it's not for me," or "The impacts are too great," whatever the reason is. And we just move on. But it's, it's the process because we can't really do the design. And again, we're not going to do the complete design and say, "Here it is," make a decision. We're going to get into about 30% design and have the basic components of, we know the alignment, we know where it's going to be placed, and we can start identifying, here's the things we see are impacted. We go to the resident, we review it.
And have the discussion.
Have the discussion. And then we go, okay, they're on board. Let's put all the conditions and additions and changes in the plans. We also review them with flood control to make sure they're okay with them in case there's anything that's not more of just replacing kind.
And?
So we're not spending the whole design money.
Okay.
And then going back going, "Well, they said no."
So we would probably go to a 30%.
That's normally what we try to do.
And in that conversation, then, we would also address like unknown or underground obstructions that are not known at this time and how we would deal with that.
Yeah, we would determine if there's any potholing that's warranted on property. We identify all the utilities or above, in the air, low ground.
And I'll leave it at this, and we would be able to, at a 30% design schedule, be able to give a timeframe for the overall schedule of their impact? And don't tell me two weeks.
No, I mean, it's, it's difficult in that regard because, again, we have to take into consideration the contractor and his, his plan to address. He's just given a designs.
Right, I mean, we have an idea of how long will you be impacted at a 30% design.
Yeah, I mean, we can give. I struggle when I give exact dates or timeframes because it's, they depend on that. And usually, I want to get the input from the contractor because every contractor is different, because how they're equipped, their manpower, they might, one contractor can get it done in two weeks. One might take a month because they're just equipment, not crews. Plus, weather becomes a problem, too, when.
Understood on that.
So I would, we'll try to give them kind of a best guesstimate, but it's really with a huge caveat, it's going to be dependent on the contractor and how he's doing that. We're going to push the contractors to be effective and efficient, say they need to get out. We need to talk about the onsite issues when it comes to animals, the animal keeping, and making sure they're aware of that and those kind of issues. But we'll address those concerns and spell them out in the plans and the specs so that the contractor's aware of the things they need to be aware of and planning for.
I'm fine with that, Chad. I'm much better with, because we hadn't addressed the 30%. But if we're only into 30%, and we have an indication of which way it would go. It was just more of spending the full $79,000 than having to shift gears.
No, that's definitely not what we want to do.
At 30%, I'm fine. Nobody else has anything else, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I do, I actually do. Go ahead, Robin.
I just have a couple of quick questions for you, Chad. On the drawing, it looks like basically the drainage would start on the west side of Temescal. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, around between Fifth Street and a little bit, actually, probably a couple houses down to the north of, where do you see the alignment?
Right.
So it's capturing water through that area.
So my question on that is, will it capture the puddle or lake, depending on the severity of the storm, that is on the east side of the streets, slightly north of that spot? Like, when they do the project, will the road improvements be done to slope more towards that particular drainage? Bonnie, perfect, thank you. Right at the bottom of the hill, right there? So you'll get two lakes for one storm drain. That's awesome. All right, cool. That's my only question.
Do you?
I just, I'm going to answer some of Greg's questions. As, as the District Two representative flood, on the flood control channel, one of the things that I get tasked with is going through these plans. Like, when Sam comes and brings them in front of us, cost is a factor, just like anything else. When their easements are done and residents make undue or really high requests or demands, remember, those are cost factors. And those are also what we look at as saying, "It's too costly. We'll go to the next project." So those are things that the residents have to understand. Is that, even we do, is, is the cost factor involved. There's a lot of projects. Sam, how many did you, did you turn in last time in February?
Five or six.
Five or six. The county flood control district has been very good about approving plans in Norco because, one, the city here works very good with the flood control projects and goes through, and they're really pretty good. But again, because we get them done. But again, it's a cost factor, and we, those are things they have to look at. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Kevin, you got anything?
Nope.
Did you make a motion, Greg?
I seconded it.
Yeah, I started to, but. It was moved and seconded.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. Call, roll, vote, please.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, item three is public comments. This is the time when persons viewing, excuse me, wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please email the city clerk so that you may be recognized. Your comments will be read at this time into the record. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized items at the time such documents are made. The city council will not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Okay, so do we have any more came in besides all of these that we already had?
No, we have two that I do have to read in to the record for general public comment.
Okay.
That are not related to the two other items later in the agenda. The first one is from Bill Naylor, receive May 6. I would like to thank the city for work being done to our trails. I do have one suggestion regarding the work. I think more water needs to be added to the DG as it is compacted, as it is not holding together well. This is probably even more important with the dry weather. And then the next is from Linda Dixon for general public comment. This is noticing that the new project that is designed for the egg ranch will come before the planning commission. I respectfully ask that these major projects be postponed until the public can actually make their comments known in person. Not everyone in town has the ability or knowledge to send in comments, and it is very difficult to do so until we have actually heard the presentation and then can form our comments in a more structured manner. It is not fair that these major projects proceed in any format or in any commission until the public is given permission to attend in person, excuse me. Please do not allow these to proceed in such a manner. We owe it to the citizens of this community to be allowed to be more physically involved in these major decisions. Linda Dixon. That's all for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go to item four is city council discussion items. Order of presentation for discussion items. Staff report presentation. Council questions of staff. Public speakers in favor, against, neutral. Please email the city clerk. And number four is council discussion and action. Our first item here is item A, proclamation of local emergency regarding COVID-19, 30-day review. Let's see. Who's that, Brian or Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, we adopted this proclamation. Yeah, it's on. We adopted this, this proclamation as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The primary purpose of that was just to allow staff, some administrative leeway in dealing with operations during the, the emergency during this COVID-19. But most importantly also is to allow the city to be able to process and recover any monies that are spent through available grants. So staff is recommending that we continue to have this on the box, again, to provide our flexibility, allow us opportunity to recover grants.
Okay, has anybody got any questions or comments to Andy?
Mayor, I do. Andy, this was made on March 16, right? Current year, okay. So did you, this has to be extended every 30 days? Is that what I'm understanding? So we didn't do anything in April? So.
It's an emergency for the last week and a half.
Okay, but I'm, what I'm, help me out here because if we, if April 16, this thing should have expired, correct? Okay.
Councilmember Hoffman, on, with the proclamation, it was ratified seven days after, and then it stays in place regardless of reviewing or not, until you either disqualify it by emergency session or by this session. So I brought it back, you know, to make sure that we're just following suit, to make sure that it is every 30 days or thereafter, the next following meeting that you can bring it back. So tonight, we can review it tonight. And if you wanted to have a special meeting next Monday or Tuesday to remove it, we can do that, or you can review it again next week. It's, it's really what you, the council chooses to review.
And that's what I'm asking, because it, the way I'm reading is we had to have a review at 30 days, which I don't recall doing because of everything else like that.
Correct.
So now we're having this review, which means we're extending it, and I'm guessing we're extending it to infinity? Or is this have an expiration date?
We'll have another 30, I'll bring it back in 30 days if I have not been instructed for a special meeting to remove this or disqualify the proclamation. So we will have another review in 30 days on this, just to keep track that we are following and have a paper trail on it. So that's basically, so if things change because of the executive order within the next week or two weeks, we can come back, have a special meeting, and remove the state of emergency for the city of Norco.
Okay, and this is what I'm asking, is, is the, is the ending date, more or less?
Infinity. Yeah, there is no ending date until you choose to remove the emergency.
So essentially, we have, we were, we're still under this emergency order.
Correct.
And even though we passed the 30-day review.
Correct.
And then I know John's going to jump in here because he wants to correct me. And then we're going to go in here into May and go through this. If we approve this tonight, how long, is this just an extension for another 30 days?
We'll go another 30 days.
Which makes the ending time win? When it has to be reviewed again.
So we are, today is May 6. I'm going to bring it back either on or thereafter June 6 for a review, for a 30-day review.
Okay, so if we let it lapse tonight, or it doesn't lapse, correct?
No, it's continued until you revoke the state of emergency for the city of Norco.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at, right?
All I was going to say was that what the statute says is that you have to look at it every 30 days to see whether or not it still should stay in place.
Okay, all right, that's, we just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Kevin, you got anything?
No.
Robin?
Andy, quick question. Has this proclamation helped us receive reimbursements? Or are there any grants or anything on the horizon that you see that having this in place will assist us?
There is a FEMA grant that we are currently pursuing as far as reimbursement is concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Notwithstanding COVID-19, this proclamation or declaration, we would do this with any local disaster, correct? Whether it's earthquake, fire, so it's just not point Pacific, just to the virus, correct?
Okay.
All I had.
That's, that's what I was going to ask, too, if we had another big fire, if we were covered under, under this. Greg took care of that question. Okay, has anybody else got any questions? Do we have any cards or speaker cards on that?
We have no speaker cards for this item.
Okay, break it back to council.
Motion to approve.
Fuck it.
I have a motion and a second. Call. I have a motion and a second call, roll, vote, please.
Can I have a discussion, please, on this? Based upon... And John might answer this. Based upon the county and what they're planning to do tomorrow or Friday, if they do or don't do anything, how does this affect us in continuing this on? Or if we wait until May to continue this on? I mean, is this a restriction on what we can do?
No, in fact, the opposite of that. It allows the city to do things that would be difficult to do administratively without the declaration of emergency. So it's a good thing, no matter what the county does.
Okay, I just don't want to lock us... And especially for the... I don't... Agreeing to this proclamation doesn't mean we're going to lock ourselves into everything that's...
Oh, no, we're just saying that as a result of that thing on the wall there, that there is an emergency that requires extraordinary actions administratively.
So it doesn't, we're not agreeing to everything lock and step for what comes down from...
Not agreeing to anything.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure of.
Okay, we can have the roll call vote now, please.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton? Mayor Protem Bash? Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Now, item B is discussion, and this is that emergency item we put on the agenda. Okay, Andy, you'll take that.
Yeah, I can introduce this item. As you know, the pandemic has created a lot of difficulty for local businesses. And a lot of them are obviously at the critical point where they need to open up and continue their businesses. As a result, they have been inquiring of city staff and as well as city council to allow them to go ahead and begin opening their businesses. The purpose of this item is, of course, for the city council to give us direction in terms of what we should be telling these businesses that make these inquiries, again, recognizing the need to balance the health concerns as well as the economic side of this pandemic. So we have this before the city council to discuss and provide direction in terms of how we should be handling these inquiries from local businesses.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Andy or John? Ted?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is a... Now I feel like the board of supervisors last night. And if you got to watch that, their marathon meeting, and then they go up and push it back to Friday. But this is a tough deal. And I'm looking at there, most people in this room here, you'd have a paycheck coming in, or you're retired and you have your pension coming in. There are folks out there that have nothing. No one asked for this. We didn't ask for this. And here's my feeling on it, is I want a haircut just like anybody else. My wife wants to go to the salon just like everybody else. She can't. I can't, okay? I want to go sit down in a restaurant. I'm hating to... I hate doing takeout, because by the time I get home, my food's cold. I hate these things. You know what? I've got a whole bunch of literature that tell me that when you breathe in and stuff, so it may kill you, it's worse. Because you're breathing in dying chemicals you shouldn't be breathing in because you're not working on a medically-approved mask. But we do it. We stay at home. As far as what we do, this kind of goes earlier, is the governor's laid out things we can and can't do, correct? Tells you who can open up and who can't. And I'm looking at the stuff here, and I'm looking at Phase 1 from the feds, what you can and can't do. And some of the stuff that the feds allow you to do, our governor says you can't. Correct, John? Andy, that's correct. If we look at large venues, and this is in Phase 1, sit-down dining, movie theaters, sporting venues, places of worship, can operate under strict physical distancing protocols. That's what he says. But you should look at here from the state. Stage 2, which the governor is going to now announce tomorrow, start Friday, creating opportunities for lower-risk sectors to adapt and reopen modified school programs in childcare, and essentially release public health guidelines for certain Stage 2 sectors, including some retail, manufacturing, logistic businesses, which will outline modifications that lower the risks of transmission. He's even allowing car sales. You can go buy a car, but I can't get a haircut. Of course, in the latter part of it, he's going to let... Maybe consider some dining in restaurants in the latter part. But we have to be good residents and adhere to it. This is from him. This is from the governor. But it's not anytime soon, according to him. And we'll know more tomorrow. I don't know what to tell people that are self-employed. I can't tell them to go open their shop. It's a violation of governor order. I can't tell them that they can open their restaurant to go eat because we have a public health officer in every county, in every county, not just ours, in the state, that has got more control than us sitting up here and every board of supervisor in the state. Is that not correct, John?
Yes.
So the public health officers, they were granted this permission from the governor to do that. They direct it. They make the decisions. Non-elected officials in most parts are making these decisions. It stinks, and I'll be honest with you, I will say it. There's help out there. We're sitting here looking at the National Restaurant Association's reopening guidance for people, what to do. But in our state, our governor is deciding who can make money and who can't. To me, that's wrong. I'm lucky, as I said, I'm on retirement. There's people out there that are probably listening, they have nothing. And the state's already borrowing money. Our grandkids are going to end up paying for this for years to come. We're stuck between a rock and a hard spot as a council. The only thing I can say to the folks out there, and what we do, is we're adults, and hopefully there's adults in the room. And you look at what is best for you as an adult. I can't make that decision for the businesses. I know they're hurting. But again, the state has said we should safe distance. We should use good practices, common sense practices. You as an employer of a small business, you got to use what you think is right in your business to keep your employees safe and to keep your customers safe. Yes, we have vulnerable population. If you look at the statistics, and I quit posting them, and I quit putting them on there because I felt like it was during the Vietnam War with Walter Cronkite giving the death report every damn night. And I got sad. We worry about how many people died, or how many people got sick, or how many people were hospitalized. That's not how we run a country. That's not how we run it. Stats only tell part of the story. The numbers don't. The numbers are vulnerable people with complicated issues or serious health issues are at risk. For the 90-plus percent of our people, we need to get our country going. Otherwise, we're going to be in the same situation as many states. In our state, especially in our cities, we're broke. There's no revenues coming in with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So just a couple of questions. So are parks are actually open, Brian? And they just can't park there? Silver Lakes is a park. It's a public-private partnership. If he opens that gate, people can go and sit in that park as long as they practice distancing? Okay, and we do, we, with the sheriff quite eloquently said yesterday he would not be enforcing some of the laws. I thought that was pretty cool. So in essence, you can already, right now, go to Silver Lakes, and you can get a meal. You can buy it there at the door. You can take it, deliver it, and get yourself a blanket. And you can literally sit anywhere you want, as long as you're distant, correct?
Not quite. I mean, there's a key part that comes first of all out. That's that the lessor of Silver Lake, or the lessie of Silver Lakes allows you to do it.
He's already said that he's good.
All I'm suggesting is that the city can't say, open the gate and you guys can go.
Well, I'm just saying that there's a certain leeway that people have as adults. And the second thing, in terms of restaurants, and I know where... I know one of the things that Brian told us is a couple of them, we're dealing with a county health officer right now. I mean, is there the possibility, what would it take? That let's say you're a restaurant, and you have a porch in the front, and you have parking spaces in the front. Can you picnic in those parking spaces as long as you make it safe? And is there a way that we can look at that in such a way so somebody could? Distancing umbrellas and protect themselves.
The answer to that under the governor's rules is probably no. Under the state, under the county's current rules, probably no. But in some respects, for your purposes, it doesn't matter. You can't tell people that they can do it or can't do it.
I'm not telling anybody to do anything. I'm just saying it's legal to picnic, and so...
Yeah, but you can't give... The city isn't giving it legally.
And I'm not giving a direction, I'm just asking questions. See, I'm one of those businesses, I'm making no money right as we speak. So I totally understand what people are talking about. And what really ticks me off is people who are making money are making these decisions. I mean, I got 24 employees right now that are not... They're all in unemployment.
Yeah. And I guess trying to say what I was trying to do to answer your question.
You're doing the lawyer thing. I get it. That's good.
Well, but simply, the city isn't in a legal position to prevent people from going to Silver Lakes or opening their business or cutting hair or anything else.
Got it.
The most that the city can do is say, here's what the rules are. We hope you follow them. Thank you.
Yep, all right. I'm just asking questions. And then Ted talked about this. And again, I'm not saying use it. I'm just saying there is a really comprehensive guide from the Restaurant Association. It's not the Restaurant Association. Yeah, National Restaurant Association. I'm not saying you should follow them. I'm just saying that there are some really excellent guidelines in here that, you know, should the opportunity come to open your restaurant, that these are things I think you should follow. Again, I'm not recommending. I totally understand that legally, we... The king said we can't do this. Oh, I'm sorry. The governor, I apologize, said we're not allowed to do this. And I don't mean to be a smartass, but I just want people to understand that our council is in such a screwed position right now because we're being told what we have to do on all levels. Zoning, what our residents, who we consider to be adults. When I go out to places, I see people being respectful, wearing their masks, even though the surgeon general says we shouldn't be wearing masks. I mean, he just said that today, I heard him. So I'm confused about all that. But there's a lot of places where people can go to get information. There's even through the cosmetology, whatever. There's another brochure that's very similar to this about how to establish hair-cutting principles and things like that. Again, John, you're the lawyer. I totally understand. I'm not telling anybody to do anything. I'm simply stating that there's lots of information out there.
What the city can do is act as a place that folks can find out that information, that...
Yeah, I'd love to. Can we post this?
That could be available.
Can we also, I know Brian has been very actively helping people, but I don't want to overwhelm him. Is there some way that we can... Can we become a conduit some way without overburdening the staff? Is there a way to become a conduit? Let's face it, all the money comes from the private sector, most of it. Can we figure out a way to be a conduit for businesses? So one, they know, let's say tomorrow the governor says, hey, we're going to open this, and on a Friday, we have it online saying, this is what you can do today.
Yes, actually, we've been doing that.
And I know you have.
All the guidelines that have been published, we put it out there to their residents.
And Andy, you have been very responsive, and so has Brian. I'm not saying you haven't. But if somehow we can let people know what there is available to help them. I mean, there's... I mean, the PPP is very difficult to get, although we just found out quite a few Norco businesses got it. So that's good. That's about it. I just think that things like this, if we could post it, put it up there, let people know, even though it's, we're not telling them that they can open. And again, they can picnic. My understanding is we're working on the golf course. Is that right, Brian? So, all right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We got an email from Andy earlier today about what our colleagues in San Jacinto had done at their meeting last night. And I thought the bullet points that they had come up with were relatively straightforward and fair. And so I'm going to share those real quick. The council gave the following direction to the city manager. Number one, enforcement of state and county orders are not a local priority. Number two, through the month of May, safety standards of wearing a face mask, washing hands, and social distancing are required and will be revisited at the end of the month. Those with... Number three, those with compromised immune systems and/or underlying conditions should remain at home or continue to shelter in place. Number four, those businesses with state license or certification requirements should carefully consider the ramifications of opening and operating a business and make their own decision. And number five, those that choose to gather in large group or plan to open indoor eating areas should understand the current state and county orders remain in place. So a couple of things. The first one is, I think all of us probably watched the supervisors' meeting yesterday. And I think what our sheriff had to say would be true for us as well. Our government has taken away the rights of the people of this community to earn money, to feed their families, to maintain their housing. And I hate it that the best we can do is say, sorry, you guys. We didn't make the decision. Sorry, our hands are tied. I can tell you that we run a food pantry out of the school. The first couple of weeks, we maybe fed 20 people. Last week, we fed 94. And on Friday, when I left work, the food pantry was empty. And I was... Had a lot of anxiety about that. I put out a notice on our social media pages, hey, we need some help. By Monday morning, the food pantry was completely restocked. As of today, we fed another 65 people. I'm just one food pantry in this community, just one. I hear stories about how people cannot, they don't have money. I had a group of three men come in today to get food for their families. And they had eight people or nine people or however many, and they just had three bags of food each. And I was like, are you sure you don't need more? And they said, no, no, we'll leave some for the others because we finally get to go back to work today. We'll have a paycheck in a week. So I have... I have a problem with the fact... So, I have, I have a problem with the fact that, number one, we're not treating our residents as adults and business owners that have the freedom and the ability to make their own decisions. Number two, I have a problem with the fact that the government has taken away people's ability to earn money and earn a paycheck, and not given the resources to those people to feed their families and maintain their shelter. Basic human needs. And then I also have a problem with the fact that we, as elected officials, represent our residents and their needs. And all of us have gotten emails all week, "Please, we just wanna go back to work." And, and those of us sitting up here, and probably a lot of you at home, know, as soon as this, we all reopen, this isn't over. It's not even close to over. Because the revenue impacts for your cities, for your state, for your county, they're just starting. And a lot of those people that are sitting at home, still getting a paycheck, will probably get the repercussions later, because you probably have a government job. And so, the cuts will come. We all know that. But it's a matter of, does your local jurisdiction have the financial stability to weather the storm? And get through the next 12 or 18 months, or whatever it is? So, with that being said, I really like what San Jacinto did, because it gave some guidelines. It said, "Here's where we're at. This is what we will do as your elected officials and/or your city staff," or whatever the case may be. And we give it back to the business owners. We give it back to the residents, for them to make those decisions. And then I'll just be brutally honest, if we look about the capabilities of enforcement, whenever we've made ordinances or rules, okay, what are the consequences and who's gonna enforce them? I, I ask the same question here. What are the consequences and who is going to enforce them? I don't know that we know the answer. I think we can all reasonably deduce what that answer is. But I just, I don't know. I think at this time, we need to have the courage to represent our residents in full faith and without fear. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Robin. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Robin. I'm sure I have a lot to say after you. You make it, you make it difficult. I guess with my colleagues, that Ted, you know, I certainly agree with your frustration, and I don't have much more to add, um, to what you've all said. It's that, we've talked about this all week, on, you know, what we can do. We certainly realize that, you know, our residents wanna hear from us. And, you know, to me, the city's position is, we, we can only enforce what our codes are. And, and very simply put, is if you have a valid business license, that's almost the extent of our enforcement. So that, when we talk about this, I put it under this press release that, that we read, that had the five or six bullet points, that, you know, I certainly support that, and I had said that earlier. It's that, you know, as the role of the city, it, it's, for us to make sure that we tell the residents what the rules are, you know, from the different levels of government, and then that they proceed with, with their caution and their own business sense. They're, they're responsible adults as business people. So, that's where I'm, I'm kinda going with, is that, that somehow we massage this and we direct the city manager to put out this press, press release, and, or whatever format, you know, through our communications department. And I think that will give, you know, some relief. Robin brought up a real good point, and it's also that, it, it's not the end of the story as far as, you know, economic relief. That, that battle is, hasn't even started yet. That, if, if, if all the restaurants open tomorrow, it, it's that traffic count that, you know, who's gonna start going back to restaurants? And that recovery is, it's gonna take a long time, and it, and it's gonna be difficult. So, you know, we have a lot more challenges in front of us. So, that's about all I can say. Robin, you make it tough to follow you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, Robin, that was a good comment you made there, and I feel the same way you do. But, uh, today we had our mayor's meeting, county mayor's meeting, and I believe there was 15 or 16 mayors in on the conversation, and this was our total subject of conversation, was the way that, uh, what each city's doing to try to help out the business people and, and the residents and everything. And the, the one deal there is the San Jacinto, they did have some good points. And everybody's facing the same problem. What do we do? How can we do this? You can't just jump up, like John says, and give them permission to open. They just, that, that's when the governor and them are really cracked down on us, I believe. But I think it'd be just up to the individual person that owns the business. If they wanna open, they could do it. But Robin was talking about the food banks. And we have several of them here in Norco. And I talked to a pastor yesterday that's gonna open one up over here, get started helping people out and everything. And one of the mayors from one of the desert cities, I can't remember which one it was, said they have a huge food bank, but then the CHP and Caltrans told them this week that they needed to, uh, move it or make other arrangements, or they're gonna bill them for traffic control, because they have it at the end of off-ramp off of the 10 freeway. And they said there's cars lined up all day and to come in there and get their food. But then the state's gonna go hammer them for a fee for trying to help people out. And I certainly don't think that's right. You know, that's when you get chopped off at the knees. But, uh, I watched the long-drawn-out supervisors' meeting yesterday. The county treasurer, he spoke after all the health people did, said, "This thing needs to open up. People need to make money. Businesses need to start opening up and make money." Because I forget how many millions or gazillions, whatever it is, that they're gonna be short next year in tax money. Because there's no sales tax coming in, nobody's got any money, they're gonna be real short, people won't be able to pay their taxes. And I, I agree with him. And I also agreed with what Sheriff Blanco said there, that, uh, they have a responsibility, but they don't have enough people to, uh, en, enforce everything. And I know we, we certainly don't. And I talk to these people quite a bit in our town. The business owners, restaurant owners, "Well, we're doing okay." But you know, really, I don't see how they can, compared to going in there and sit down to have a meal. And I go to several different one of them during the month. And I'm using them now for takeouts, but, uh, I can't see that they can keep up with takeouts with what they do during the, uh, regular meal service. I just don't see. I know everybody's gotta be suffering. And, uh, as far as, uh, our residents, our business owners, I certainly believe they all are responsible adults that would follow guidelines like social distancing and masks and gloves, or whatever they require. I believe they're, they're responsible enough to do that. I've been to two places, called in, ordered my food, come back out, people are sitting on the tailgate of their trucks having lunch, or having a tailgate party out there in a parking lot. There's no law against that, that I can see. If anybody enforced that, somebody having lunch where they wanted to, I think there's a big problem there. But, John talking about Silver Lakes and the gate and all that, well, I'll tell you what. My thinking, if I went to the Silver Lakes or the golf course and got my food, and I wanted to walk out there and plop my butt down in the pasture and eat, I've done that many a times in my life, and ain't nobody but the landowner gonna tell me, "I can't sit out there and have my lunch." No government official, I don't care who they are. Because that's my right to eat where I want to, and I feel like everybody else has got the same, same privilege. And I just think, uh, like everybody said, it's a, it's a hard, uh, hard decision. But I think the business owners, restaurant owners, whatever, and the patrons, I think they're all responsible enough to follow some guidelines. And that, that's all I have to say. Does anybody else have anything to add? Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and the conversation has come up about a face mask and that. And, uh, I wanna share with you, uh, you know, Hippocrates once said, "Don't let the cure be worse than the illness." And I see we're all out there masked, and I take mine off, because I can't, I want people to hear this. And this is from a pathologist friend of mine, who has written several papers. And you can find this out from University of Cambridge, Ventura County Public Health Department, along with, I know, the World Health Organization. They've all written about the validity of masks, and even the surgeon general. And I'm just gonna read part of this. And this is why I, I, I know we don't all have N95 masks, but I want you to remember when you get masks and you're out there. Uh, and I'll read some of this. "Have you ever given consideration to the safety of your face masks? I see many masks being sold by presumably unlicensed street vendors. What materials are being used? From where are the materials coming? In what conditions have they been handled? I am not aware of any regulation regarding the textiles to be used in the manufacture of face masks. And of these materials have not been designed to be placed over the face or through which to breathe. In fact, many dyes may cause respiratory sensitivity and possible subsequent allergic reactions. What is the safety of using colored textiles? Many of the dyes used for cotton, the material recommended by the CDC to make face masks, are synthetic dyes, which are mostly organic compounds based around a benzene ring. Have you ever accidentally washed a colored article of clothing with a white ones? Many dyes are not color fast. What is the toxicity and carcinogenicity of these dyes, particularly when worn over the nose and mouth? Subjected to a warm, moist environment for a prolonged period in contact with the tongue and mucous membrane? What is the health danger of a myriad of other dyes used on various textiles that may be used to make a mask or bandanas? What is the potential for toxicity if permanent pressed fabrics? Many of these textiles use a fixative chemical that are released, formaldehyde. What are the consequences of the long-term use of such fabrics?" They go on and on. I just, as, I'm sitting up here, I'm not a medical expert, but I do listen to them. And I, I go back to, just think about what you're doing and what you got. The good thing is, is, and I'm gonna mispronounce this, hypercapnia. Capnia. That's where you breathe too much from the CO2, and you're wearing, constantly wearing a mask. So, just think about this, when you go through and you're, you're talking about your employees, if your business, or your family, is, be cautious of what you're actually putting on your face and you're breathing this stuff in. That was just, thank you, Mayor.
We're dead.
Yeah, Buffy?
Well, it goes back to, like Robin said, we're just starting. And, and I say, I don't want it to get to the point where, like Hippocrates says, "Don't make the cure worse than the illness." And all the ramifications that are on in life. Just my point here. Thank you.
Okay, so what's the direction here, John?
I, I think probably if you'd make a motion, something like San Jacinto did, directing the city manager to prepare basically your comments in his format and, and provide them to the public.
I'd also like just, I don't want the, I don't want the comments, but things like this, that businesses say, Eddie, when they're ready to open, I'll advise to go.
Who would review that material and make sure that, uh, it's something that we wanna put on our website? Once, once we put it out, we kinda own some, uh, we have ownership of that. But I, uh, do wanna restate, uh, the, what I had from the city council, uh, is to put out a information or press release, um, regarding providing guidelines pertaining to the ability of businesses to reopen, recognizing that, uh, we have limited enforcement resources. And, uh, we also need to recognize the requirements of county and, and state orders, as well as the rights of businesses to make their decisions with respect to, uh, opening their businesses and following those guidelines.
Can you have that out to us by tomorrow afternoon? Email it to us, or, and then have Kelly put it on her, uh, little news blast, or...
Drop it, we'll find it tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. All right. And what, uh, do we have another item that you've...
Oh, just the, uh, the Silver, the Silver Lakes, I mean, the next item on the agenda. But you, but you need, you need to make a motion.
I'm hoping to do it for a little bit. Need a second.
I'll second it.
What are we doing?
We vote.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, John, you said that next one is, uh...
Yeah, the, the next one is that item, which is actually agendized. The discussion of, uh, the Silver Lakes proposed, uh, Mother's Day celebration, uh, at the park. But, uh, two things. One, based upon the action you've just taken, I think that you've probably covered that issue. But, two, and I'm only speaking from what I've heard, that logistically, it's not able to happen in any case. That, uh, there's not the sufficient staff, and the restaurant won't be ready. And so, again, that, that's up to, uh, Silver Lakes. And if, it's different than that, than it's on them. But, uh, but that's not something that the city has any control over. It's not a city event, and we're not directing anybody to do anything. And it would be, to the extent that Silver Lakes is able, logistically, to do it, it's subject to the guidelines which, uh, you just voted on.
Yeah, 'cause I think we got an email on that, didn't we, Andy? That, uh, this, this event for Mother's Day wasn't gonna happen at Silver Lakes because of short staffing, or...
I, I, did I, I don't recall receiving a specific email or not, but maybe...
Yeah. Hey, look, Dana, didn't we get one on that?
Yes. Um, it is, um, from Linda Dixon. It is approximately, one, two, three, it's the back of the third page. And I can read that, if you would like, into the...
Okay. Yeah, go ahead and read that.
Um, "After extensive discussions, this item was not worded correctly on the agenda. It was not intended to be an event, but a beginning to open up the pass-through concept with safe distancing dining on the patios and grass areas surrounding the Silver Lakes Fieldhouse Restaurant. This is to be the beginning of a Wednesday-through-Sunday dining experience on-site, not a one-day-only event." not a one-day-only event. I do not know who made this mistake, but please reconsider the way it is properly discussed. I had attached a flyer with my information regarding Mother's Day, and perhaps that's how it happened. The latest information regarding Mother's Day dinner will continue to be pickup only, and the onsite dining will begin approximately May 20 of 2020 based on staffing. This will be the beginning of opening up on onsite dining with the guidelines of both county and state recommendations. ADA guidelines are also in place and always in compliance. And then she continues, "I'm respectfully asking you to approve the submitted plan to expand the onsite dining option as presented beginning on the day the Silver Lakes Fieldhouse Restaurant will be able to staff this plan."
Okay, two comments. One, obviously, you don't approve anything.
Correct.
Two, Mrs. Dixon, I mean, she isn't, has no, she's not, has no ownership interest in Silver Lakes, nor can, I don't think she can speak on behalf of RJ Brandis. But if RJ is able to open, then he has the city's blessing in the same sense that other businesses do.
Okay, Kevin?
Stanton, my understanding is right now, you can go get takeout, and if you park your car there, you sit on the grass, and he allows it, you're allowed to do that, correct? As long as you do safe distancing and that kind of thing, it's basically a public park when he opens it.
No, we had that discussion earlier, not exactly.
Yeah, I get it.
And it ultimately is still the decision of the...
Right, of the property owner, as Burwin said, if the property owner says, "Go ahead, sit out on my grass and have your lunch," and there's the trash can, throw it away, and that kind of thing, he's good with it. If he's good with it, then it's okay.
Well, that's a little different than the agenda item, though. The, that the agenda item is going to add, apparently, was going to advertise, there's going to be a celebration of Mother's Day. They're gonna provide food and sit out in the patio and all those things. It's my understanding, but I have not talked to him directly, that logistically, RJ is unable to provide that service.
Okay.
And I'd just be concerned that the city is somehow implying that it's okay, you know, everybody come, when ultimately, it's up to the Silver Lakes.
Well, what we can do is encourage people to do takeout and to help these restaurants. I was at Del Taco today, and the line was clear into where they're renting cars. I mean, we can encourage people to support our different restaurants.
Ever been to an In-N-Out?
I'm not gonna try that one. But my point is, is that let's encourage all of our residents as much as they possibly can, those that have money, to, and also just to, I know it's not part of the agenda, but if you've got any spare food, I will do something, get some food to these different food banks. I wasn't aware it was escalating like that. So, anyway, that's the best we can do, right? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ted?
So, based upon what the governor put out, May 1st, picnics are approved. So, if they want a picnic in the park, and I know you're looking at me kind of funny, but here's the difference, John. We have two places that essentially have come up to us and have made dimension. One is on 130 acres, and the other one, I don't know how big...
Okay, I'm just...
I'm just saying, I'm not asking, we're not giving permission, but based upon being adults, and we treat them like adults, knowing that they're, the rest of the public health and the public health officers and those guys, and that they go around in their little cars, and we have no control on that, nor do we, we can't say yes. But we, as far as we're concerned, as long as they follow the guidelines as issued by the public health entities, that's up to them.
And, well, whether they do or whether they don't, it's up to them. And the May 20th opening that RJ has advertised is different. I mean, that's something, I just didn't want, based upon this action, to confuse the public into thinking that the Mother's Day celebration is absolutely on. I mean, maybe it will be, but...
Well, you can go get your filet mignon dinner for thirty-some bucks per person, so, I mean, not bad.
And I was looking at, not funny about the picnic, that's legitimate. The rules are theoretically, while you can certainly do that, the quote picnic is for those people who reside in the same house. It's not for Mother's Day celebration where you come from Northern California and Las Vegas and have fifty people or hanging out with mom.
Talk about fifty people.
And I read that, too, that it's for people in the same household.
Right.
That's allowed to do the picnic legally. But if you can't stop them, you can't stop them.
Well, and it's, again, one, RJ, two, we are out of it at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else got anything? Greg?
Yes, number one, just to thank all the residents for their comments and expressing their concerns and their emails. Granted, there was some confusion the way with the flyer, but I think what we have taken in our previous action, we'll address the needs of the residents, and especially the ones that have reached out to communicate with us. So, thank you, Mayor.
Robin? And I agree with Greg that on thanking everybody, and I've had a lot of phone calls this week, and only one person emailed me about the thing, but a lot of people were concerned about not being able to get out and open their businesses and everything. So hopefully, they'll come up and do the right thing after they hear what the governor has to say and what the supervisor's come up with Friday, which I'll say of on that meeting, that Supervisor Hewitt was the only one that really stood out yesterday and wanted to do the right thing with everything and not put that thing off for two days. I think he did a great job on his deal. But anybody else got anything? We need to vote on that, or is that just a discussion item? Okay, we'll move on then to staff communication, city manager. Andy, we'll start over with you this time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to let you know that earlier today, the city managers from City of Eastville, City of Corona, and myself, we had a telephone conference, actually a video conference with Assemblywoman Sabrina Savantes. The purpose of that call is to urge the state legislature to provide some form of economic relief to cities, given the economic and financial consequences that our cities are facing because of the pandemic, our loss of revenue, the stories everywhere across the state in terms of the impact. We're gonna be losing significant amount of ourselves' tax revenues. We're gonna be losing significant amount of our transient occupancy tax revenues, as well as some other revenues that are going to be impacted by this. I think Councilwoman Robin Grunmeyer stated earlier, the impact is going to be long-lasting. What I've been told is that this is going to be probably for two years, that we're gonna be looking at revenue shortfalls. Again, the CARES Act that the federal government provided, did provide plenty of money to counties, as well as some large cities. The difficulties that, or the problem is that these funds will have smaller cities such as us, cities under 500,000, we are not included in that, in that package. And what is, we are, there are letters going around, and again, the purpose of this meeting is to make sure that she advocates for smaller cities so that additional legislation can be passed to make sure that smaller cities get some revenues to mitigate the impact of this pandemic. She took that to heart, listened very carefully, and she had some positive things to say, and that the state is working to support that. I will encourage all of you, in particular the mayor, to reach out to her office and also speak with her if you have the chance, to pass on the same message that the city managers did pass on to her today. And of course, next week, the city council member, the city council meeting, not next week, will be actually taking a look at the budget and discussing in details what we are looking by way of impact from this pandemic. That's all I have.
Okay, John?
Nope.
John, you never say anything. Lizette? Sam? Brian?
Hi, I'd like to give the council an update as well as the public. Today, Norco opened a COVID-19 test site here. We actually, today, had 95 people come through and get tested. I want to reach out to everybody, the testing is free. You can go onto our website, you can actually download the information to fill out and/or make a call and get an appointment. It is by appointment, so, and it's very, very quick, so it doesn't take a lot of time to get in and get out. And the testing is done. This is a state-tested-run facility. There were eight additional sites that were picked in Riverside County. City of Norco was one of those selected. There are only three in operation at this time. I feel pretty good that we were able to get this. The notice on this came really at the end of last week, and congratulations to my staff because they were able to put this together and we were ready, come today, to be able to go in operation. This testing, and based on our success here, they're looking at continuing this through the end of the month for testing. So it is a good opportunity for not only our residents, but people in the outlining areas of Norco to come get it tested as well. And then we'll be sharing this information with some of the other agencies that are in the city so that they can take advantage of this as well.
Thank you, Brian. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a brief moment to, as the community is probably aware of, we've been doing quite a few street improvements lately, River Road, Del Mar. We just did quite a bit of Hamner Avenue between Third and Hidden Valley, and some questions were raised on that project on social media about why the city chose to do that project versus others. And certainly, the city is very aware, staff is very aware, there are other streets that are probably in worse condition. But there are reasons why those streets haven't been done yet. Some of them are Hillside, Temescal, Corona's an area, several sections of Hillside, Valley View. In those particular cases, and I encourage the public, you can always call Public Works and we can talk to you about your street and what our plans are and the issues. In many of those streets I just mentioned, there are other utilities that have to go in first, whether it's a storm drain, a sewer line, or water line. We want to get in there and do those utilities and then repave the road so we don't come tear it up again. We mainly did Hamner Avenue primarily for the reason that it was at a condition that if we waited three or four more years, it would have cost us 30% more, because right now, we could get that road done, and it's a grind and overlay, which is a simpler process versus doing a full reconstruct. So the decision was made because it is our heavily, most heavily-used road, it has the most impact, and by treating it now and getting it repaired, it will last us a lot longer and cost us a lot less. But trust me, in your, the city staff is very aware, there are many other streets that need attention, and we have plans for many of them. And so if the public is interested in their particular street, to contact us, and we'll tell them what's the situation with their particular street. And we don't have them all mapped out, more than we're gonna do them, but we have some of the major ones. And so there's a lot of work to be done in the background that we don't necessarily share with the public or make available because it's kind of convoluted, but I can explain what we're doing. But be assured, based off of comments from council and the public, we're very aware of there are a lot of streets still need some love, but we've accomplished a lot of repairs on streets over the last four years that have had a very positive effect on the community. So feel free to call Public Works if you have any questions regarding your street, and I'd be happy to talk to you about what our plan is and for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. And once again, thank you for adding that second left turn lane there at southbound Hamner, at eastbound Second Street, because I think it was about seven years ago when I asked to get those three intersections done. So that's number two, and they both got done under your watch. So hopefully, Caltrans will get on the ball and let us do Sixth Street up there. So thank you very much. Okay, see two fire chiefs back there. Who's gonna flip the coin and come and talk to us? Both of you should come up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to see all of you tonight. It's been quite a while. I can share where I've been the last month, but that'll take a little while, so I'll have to do that another day. But I would like to briefly introduce Battalion Chief John Cortez. He's filling in behind Chief Lane. He's already connected with most of the city staff, and we'll get him around to meet all of you under the right social distancing and all that good stuff. But John's a great guy. I've known him my whole career, and I assure you, Norco's in good hands when John's on duty as your local battalion chief. And then we just have one quick item. The heat is here, you all are feeling the heat, stay hydrated, defensible space, it's that time of year, please cut your weeds and please help us share that message. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to meeting you all. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, John. Lieutenant, you can't keep hiding back there all night, I can see you now.
Just a reminder, this Saturday is the 40th anniversary of Deputy Evans' memorial. With the lockdown and our current situation, we can't have a proper ceremony, so the department's prepared a video that's gonna be released later this week, that's gonna go out on all our social media platforms, memorializing Deputy Evans and his 40th anniversary of the Norco bank robbery. That's all I have.
Thank you. Steve? Dana?
Just want to, again, remind the community to make sure that you're filling out your census survey and get those in as soon as possible. The numbers do help our city and help with programs, and so please make sure that you get those filled out right away. Any questions, you can always call my office at the city clerk's office, or you can look online at our website, has lots of information about the census. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt? You never say nothing either, Matt. Mr. Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want, one item is to thank all of staff. You guys have been working long and hard, and especially this last week has been trying as far as being on council, so I know it's just been magnified for all of you. And Brian, I didn't know you worked that many hours. You can't get through to you during the day, so we end up talking at night. So I just want to let you know, I appreciate all of you reaching out and doing what you're doing. One thing I'd like to ask council, we've all had a few residents reach out to us, and I think this would be possibly to put this on the agenda, is to reconsider a portion of our traffic calming, specifically towards reconstruction on Del Mar Street, specifically to speed bumps or speed tables when they are on an existing street, and then when we reconstruct the street that we don't replace them.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to have a discussion on that.
Have a motion in a second for the discussion of the upcoming agenda item.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Robin, you got anything to add?
Just something that's been on my mind. When we are under stress, we have a tendency to maybe not appreciate... to maybe not appreciate others as much or not have empathy for what our neighbors or staff or what other people are going through. And it's been kind of evident to me, really evident to me this week in particular. And so I just want all of us to remember that all of us in this particular situation are under a tremendous amount of stress, whether they articulate that or not, whether you're getting a paycheck or not. And so as we're communicating with our friends, our neighbors, our family, you know, we've been kind of cooped up for more than 50 days now, to really think about how we are talking to each other and interacting. And I was talking to a city staff member this week, and I said, "If everybody would just kind of be cognizant or mindful that you're under stress, take a breath, and then think about how you're going to communicate, how you're going to talk, how you're going to react." I think we would all hopefully make a lot better decisions and, and be more professional and courteous in how we interact with, with others. And I think that's critically important at this time. It doesn't matter what words you use, they can't be taken back, period. They can't. Not everything you say, everybody's going to agree with. If we look at the medical information that's available right now, if you look at how economic decisions and policy decisions are being made right now, it doesn't matter. There's always going to be people that are unhappy and that don't agree, and that's okay because of the country that we live in. I just think it's important that we take a few minutes and be cognizant of the fact that it's okay for people to have different opinions. It's okay that we don't agree, but that it's really, really important that we do our best to treat others with respect and courtesy and kindness, and make sure that that's reflected in how we talk to other people, what we post on social media, and just how we go about our, our general day. I think it will make getting through this a lot easier. And when you send an email or a text message or however you communicate to others, it is a reflection really of yourself and your core and your values, even if you're, more so, I think, when you're under stress, is when kind of your true character really is displayed. And so I appreciate deeply the input that we've received this week. And like Councilman Newton said, there's been a lot this week, and it's not just been on businesses, it's been about streets and all, all kinds of stuff, all kinds of stuff that we've had resident input on. And so just, just be mindful that we're all under stress and be cognizant of that, and take a breath, and, and just realize it's maybe not going to be okay for a little while, but that we're, we, because of that and in spite of that, that we need to be kind and courteous, courteous to everyone and, and extend to others the grace that we want to receive as well. So sorry for getting a little preachy. I've been missing church for a lot, too. But I just felt like with all the input we got this week that that's something that we all probably need to reflect on and think about. Thank you.
Kevin?
We did Del Mar. Andy, I sent you an email. Can we get, are we good with the bridge funding? Do we know what's going to happen with that?
I'll check on that. As far as I know, nothing has changed, Chad. Do you have any new information?
We're good, okay.
Good.
All right.
Had a report the other day.
Oh, good, okay. The water tower, Chad, the famous water tower up in the hills? It's got a lot of weeds around it right now. Is there some way we can take care of those weeds? Yeah, I, I tell residents that right now is there's, there's a few things going on, but if you could just maybe put that on your radar. And then I, I do my walk up around Ted's and stuff, and as I walk on Vandermolen, I see a lot of people with no socks on, tennis shoes, in the heat, going up just late in the afternoon in shorts. And I think we need to maybe think about some rattlesnake signs, because I don't think they know that there's-
They got to eat, too.
Yeah, well, okay. But, no, seriously, I think we need to, Brian, would that be in your department, that we just compose some rattlesnake signs? Yeah, I thought so. And I, you know, the reason I mention is, I said to somebody, says they had a bunch of little kids and a dog running around. And I said, "You know, there are rattlesnakes, and they're out right now." And I was told very nicely to keep my opinion to myself, and they use digits. So the water tower, the COVID, and so you're going to get information on the COVID thing so we can get that out to residents? That'll be on the website?
Yes.
Okay. And then the suggestion to postpone, can we do that? Can we postpone the timeline of a submitted project, i.e. the Old Egg Ranch? Because I think they make a valid point. That's, that's going to be a very big deal for the city of Norco.
Yeah, we are looking at various options to make sure that the residents get ample opportunity to participate in that process.
Yeah, because remember, last time we filled a room.
That's what we are doing.
Okay, all right.
We're going to make sure that we have residents' participation. I cannot promise that we're going to hold this off until the current situation that we're in has expired. No one knows how long-
No, I understand, and I understand the developer has a development agreement that he's got to adhere to, too. So, all right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so the residents know, you have been getting your energy, well, through Edison, but your Western Community Energy for the whole, for the whole month of April was, was supplied by the Western Community Energy Group. And as of May 1st, that also includes, they brought in the cities of Eastvale, Hemet, and Aruba Valley. So right now, the cities of Norco, Wild Mar, Paris, Eastvale, Hemet, and Aruba Valley, the purchase, the energy purchase that you're getting from Edison is through the WCE. So I haven't seen any interruption in that, so kudos to my fellow board members of the WCE and also city managers, Andy and company, that helped us put this thing together, and for the faith of the residents for doing that. I also have a couple of things real quick. And Andy, or Brian, whoever you know, grocery outlets, May 14th, correct? They're opening?
Right.
Okay, I was just asking, because I saw it on there. And I went to really, a couple of months ago, Parker Rex and the city hired Todd Schenk. Let me tell you something, that guy can swing a shovel. He was out there along with the city staff. And Brian, kudos to your city staff up there at the parks, along with the parks volunteers. As you know, we don't have any Riverside County Sheriff Court work releasers, releaseees out there. So we have been doing hand digging and everything else and putting in the new drain lines up there. And I'm very proud of your staff, Brian and Andy. Did a good job over there. I know it's been frustrating, and the last couple of days has been very hot, but that was good. Also, the sad part, the rodeo in the Norco Montipasi announced that this year they will not be holding their rodeo in August because of one, and the COVID-19, also the lack of funding. And so I don't blame Diane and her crew. It happens, if you haven't heard. And then for Norva, if you're out there listening, it's too bad, but this Friday is Military Spouses Appreciation Day. I know we, the city proclaimed the complete appreciation for the military, but this Friday is Friday, May 8th. So if you know of a military spouse, past, present, current, whatever, please thank him for their support on Friday. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. When you started talking about the energy, I thought you were going to tell everybody about the Goldies, but-
The who, what?
The Goldies, the vitamins.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not in it.
Anyway, I don't have anything else to add, and we will adjourn.